Okay, good evening. I'd like to call North River Village Board Meeting for Monday, June 7th, 2021 to order. Please join me in silent prayer and meditation. Okay, thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Jesse, please call and roll.
Mayor Guafino?
Here.
Trustee Curtis?
Here.
Trustee Carol?
Here.
Trustee Gately?
Here.
Trustee Lowery?
Here.
Trustee Nedjvedj?
Here.
Trustee Salazar?
Here.
All right, thank you. Okay, I want to open the public hearing for Forest Ridge Townhome Development Annexation Agreement. Is there anybody to speak on behalf? Yeah, this, the developers are present. If anyone has any questions for tonight, they're just opening up for public comment. Questions? Okay, seen none. I'll close the public hearing. Any audience comments? The consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Recall the role.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Nedjvedj?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Okay, thank you. Under new business, item one, approval of engineering agreement with WBK Engineering for Tannert Trails Convenience Study in the amount of eighty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. John?
Thank you, Mayor. If you recall, way back in March of 2019, we located a sinkhole out in Tanner Trails. It was a really big sinkhole that we spent a lot of time pumping down so we could repair the plastic pipe at the base of it. At that point, we were able to repair the pipe with help of a contractor. However, when we went back through after we repaired it, we televised that same pipe and we found that the plastic pipe, the existing one, was compressed and at several locations it had been struck by agricultural equipment and there was dirt getting into that pipe. Essentially, it was going to be creating a flooding problem for not only the agricultural fields but the Tanner Trail six subdivision because it was preventing the water from draining out of that storm sewer system to the Lake Run Creek. So after we realized that that was going to be a problem, we hired WBK to perform an engineering study to provide us with some options on what we can do to repair the pipe. At a committee of the whole meeting not too long ago, then they presented four options to us and those four options were to replace part of that twenty-four inch plastic pipe with the thirty-six inch diameter concrete pipe. We felt the consulting engineering firm explained that that probably wasn't the best solution because there's still risk of that remaining plastic section of failing and we'd be back in this situation repairing that sometime down the line. The second solution was to repair the entire twenty-four inch diameter pipe with a thirty-six diameter inch concrete pipe. That was the solution that was recommended by the consulting engineer by staff and that was the preferred option that the village board was looking at at that time. They also had the third solution, which was to run a smaller pipe in parallel with the existing pipe at a lower cost. However, the concern there was if that existing pipe again did fail at any point, we would still be lacking capacity to carry the water we needed. And the final solution that they had offered was one where we would turn part of the Kane County Forest Preserve field into a wetland, create a ditch and then a pipe to run to Lake Run Creek. And that was, there were a couple of factors that were preventing that from being the best solution, the cost for one, but also the grade and the slope that was needed to get the water from Tanner Trails to Lake Run Creek was very flat. So when WBK, basically this discussion then is to confirm that we do want to go ahead with the preferred option that we selected at the committee of the whole meeting, the option two, which was to replace the twenty-four inch diameter plastic pipe with the thirty-six inch diameter concrete pipe and then to approve the agreement with WBK to begin the design of this project. So for WBK to design this project, it would cost them eighty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. Right now, we have seventy-six thousand budgeted and that was because we were estimating the cost at the time of the budget. So we weren't entirely sure of the scope of work. What we learned later on when we did a little bit more research is there was a significant amount of permits involved with this project. So not only would we be getting a permit from Kane County Stormwater, but we'd also have to get one from the United States Army Corps, the Illinois Department of Natural Resources and the United States Fish and Wildlife Survey because this pipe would be entering into a creek. So at that time, we weren't sure that level of effort was needed to secure the permits. And it was also because basically we have to get easements because we don't own the property which this pipe is going across. Do the research, understand who owns the property and then develop those plats of easement to get the property owners to sign off on them. In addition, there will be twenty-five thousand dollars up to more in cost for soil borings. This isn't included with this agreement, but I'm just making you aware of that going forward. And the purpose of those is so that we understand exactly what the soil is along that area where the pipe is going in because we believe what had happened with the initial pipe failure is part of the ground was made out of organic material or peat. And that didn't provide the existing pipe with enough support which caused it to squish and then water and soil started getting infiltrating into the pipe. So we're going to do that test study with the soil borings to get a better understanding of exactly what's going on with the soils. So in summary, this item is the approval of an engineering agreement with WBK for the Tanner Trails Conveyance Study in the amount of eighty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Recall the role, please.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Nedjvedj?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Very good. Thanks. Item two, approval of award bid for Illinois Route Thirty-One Sidewalk Installation Project to Geneva Construction Company from amount of fifty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty cents. John?
Thank you, Mayor. Several years back, the village received a grant for the installation of sidewalks around Illinois Route Thirty-One. The project stalled for a few years, but we got back on it and we were able to, our village engineer was able to design the project in-house and get permitting for this project to advance it and begin to move it forward. The sidewalk is going to connect basically I, A and W on the east side of Route Thirty-One and then south to one thirty-one or one forty-one Route Thirty-One, which is about Ruth Stesselmann's law offices. So the segment of sidewalk that we're completing is only five hundred and thirty feet under this grant, but it is the beginning of a bigger project that Steph is hoping to accomplish in the future, which is connecting, providing pedestrians a sidewalk from Sullivan Road all the way north to our common or our corporate limits, at least on one side of the Route Thirty-One. And the reason for that is we noticed that at Ashbury and Eden's Gardens, there's a lot of pedestrians that are generated from those facilities and they're making use of the public library and also Village Hall and other amenities along the corridor. So the long-term goal is to get that complete segment in. This would be the beginning of that. The prices we received from Geneva Construction are aligned with what we expected. And with that grant, the project is really only going to cost the village out of the capital fund eleven thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars. So this item then is the approval of bid to Geneva Construction Company in the amount of fifty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty cents.
Motion to approve. Second. Discussion?
I have a question. Can we ever use TIF funds for the sidewalk project and for the future proposal?
We sure can. I may have misspoke if I said that eleven thousand was coming from capital because in this case it is actually coming from the TIF funding. So I apologize.
I would like to comment, please. Bill Slaker? Hello?
Okay, yeah, go ahead wherever you're at.
Okay. Yeah, it's, we're looking forward to the sidewalk being done. It's been over twenty years. Well, not necessarily over twenty, but close to twenty years in the happening and apparently some of the the way it was going to be handled, those records don't exist and per conversation with Steve Bosco, I'll be meeting with Brandon tomorrow to to see if we can get things ironed out. I just wanted to get on the record. It seems that that's an important thing to do based on the lack of records that exist otherwise. Thank you.
You're having a hard time.
Didn't you speak up?
Can I speak up?
Yeah, speak louder. We can't hear you.
Well, this is pretty loud on this end. Sorry.
Are you still there?
Yes, I am.
Can you kind of repeat maybe the last couple? We couldn't understand those trailing off at the end.
Yes, yes, I understand and I just love technology. I'll be meeting with Brandon tomorrow to iron out some issues with the sidewalk installation. Was that, get through it all?
Yes. Yeah, if I can, Bill, you can hear me, I'm sure. So for the board, as the Slaker residence is on that strip where the sidewalk is going in and currently they park their cars right where the sidewalk is going to go through. So what we're trying to do, because they have a unique property to Route Thirty-One, is we're going to have our village engineer go out there today or I keep saying today, tomorrow or the day after and just kind of take a look at it and see if there's any way to have the sidewalk done in a way where they can still park their cars. They don't have a traditional driveway currently. They literally have just a gravel pad off the side of the road and then it goes down a hill where the driveway used to be, but it's all grassed over now. So they park along the curb line and the sidewalk is essentially going right, right through where they park at least one of their two vehicles.
That's, that's part of it, but I don't necessarily agree with the phrasing of it, but under the circumstances, we'll leave it go and I'll come back on it.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve. Okay, call a question?
Yes, please. Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, no more discussion. We're good. Okay, please call.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Nedjvedj?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item four, approval of the way bids to perform well five rehabilitation, maintenance and well site improvements and award contract to Lane Christianson Company in the estimated amount of two hundred and forty thousand dollars and not to exceed three hundred thousand. John?
Mayor, I can go ahead with that one, but I think you skipped the previous one. Item three.
My bad. Okay, we'll go back to three. All right. Approval of purchase of new Ford Explorer for the Public Works Department in the amount of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and four. John?
Thank you, Mayor. We're requesting the purchase of a twenty-twenty-one Ford Explorer for the village engineer, the newly hired position. It's a vehicle that'll get him to construction sites and transport the survey equipment. Basically, where the way we're operating right now is Brandon is driving our, the water superintendent's old pickup truck that has some transmission issues and we keep the survey equipment then in an old squad car, which I drive around. And the problem with that is the squad car can't necessarily go off-road with survey equipment. So we're transporting the survey equipment into the truck to get in the truck to drive out to, for example, the sinkhole site or something like that. So the purpose of the truck would be to house that surveying, surveying equipment and transport Brandon around to construction sites. When we were looking at vehicles to replace this one, we did take a look at used vehicles as a potential option. What we found is in this market, the price of used vehicles has actually increased greater than it is on the state bid purchase or on the the collective municipal collaborative option that we discovered as well. So and that was for a vehicle that was a couple of years old with twenty-five thousand miles on it. It was going for more than what we would knew at this point. So what we did do is we took a look at three different options for purchasing. We looked at the state bid process. We looked at a municipal collaborative and then we also solicited prices from a local vendor to see if they could match either of those prices. When we looked at the state bid price, we got a bid price back at thirty-two thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars and typically we've been purchasing our prices or our vehicles off of the state bid collaborative. However, what we found is through a new collaborative, this municipal collaborative, the price was actually lower when we went through them and we got a price of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and four dollars. And that's a collaborative that many municipalities, not only throughout the state, but throughout the country participate in. And even though we're not a member, we were able to get the pricing for the vehicle at that, at that same price. So once we got that price, what we did is we took that price over to one of the local vendors and asked if they could match it and they were, they didn't give us a written quote, but they verbally told us that it was a good price and that they weren't going to be able to match it or beat it at that point. So this vehicle we're requesting is going to be at that cost of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and four dollars. There is going to be an aftermarket request of safety lights put on to outfit the vehicle when it's working in traffic and we're estimating that to be four to six thousand dollars. The, if, when we go ahead and get the, the safety lights installed, it would be in the same pattern that we have on the admin vehicle and typically we've been going through the vendor who supplies the police department with their lighting as well. So this request then is the approval to purchase a new Ford Explorer for the Public Works Department in the amount of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and four dollars. Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question. I've heard from people in the car automobile industry that this is the absolute worst time to be buying a car, a brand new car due to low inventory and the prices are really high. Is this an urgent need that needs to be addressed right now or can it wait until, you know, for six months when inventories are more reliable and stable?
I think we could probably hold off on it. There is a risk too that the market gets worse, I guess, is the other thing too, but yeah, that's possible that we could hold off. I don't know necessarily the delivery time. Sometimes it's four to six months just on delivery on some of these vehicles. So it would probably be more around ten to twelve months than we'd be pushing it off.
See, I think, I think the price is probably the cheapest you're going to get. I don't think it's going to go down lower. I mean, I look at trucks every day and it's like, there's nothing for thirty thousand dollars. I mean, just saying. I think it's a pretty fair price.
You mean that if you wait six more months, you may not get nothing for a year. I mean, look at the, the big six wheeler and they're out a year or two, you know, so I heard the inventory is low and it's, it was hard to get them, so.
Everything is delayed right now, whether it's windows, everything is delayed in terms of time of delivery appliances. So you do take that risk that you, maybe you get a somewhat of a better price, but you're going to be having to wait much longer time to get the vehicle delivered.
I'm thinking the pricing too, based on the fact that we've gone through a municipal cooperative, you go through a state bid. I mean, the, the companies that end up winning the awards from the state are literally selling probably hundreds of these cars throughout. So that price is, is extremely low, but on top of that, when the chief ordered police vehicles, not this or when it was the one before that, I think it took over twelve months to get our explorers. So I mean, it depended on how fast the inventory comes, we might be waiting a longer time as it is already.
Yeah, it seems pretty reasonable. Okay, quick, call the role, please.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Nedjvedj?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
Trustee Carol?
Yes. Okay, now item four.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a little more complicated because there's two projects kind of at this well five site. And I'm going to go through them individually. I'm going to start first with the pump and motor rehabilitation project and the request of this item is essentially we're asking to waive bids on the pump and motor rehabilitation and a portion of the site improvement. So to start the pump and motor rehabilitation project is something where, that we've just performed on well six and what we did was we pulled the pump and motor, we pulled out the column pipe that feeds into the, feeds from the pump to the motor to get the water into our distribution system. We looked at that electrical cable that powers the, the pump and the motor. And if you recall, this item in well six, we had to come back to the board and ask for more money because the electrical cable was spliced in three different places. So that's just kind of jog your memory of that pump, the pump and well rehabilitation at well six. And the reason we waived bids at that time is because these motors have mercury within the seals of the gaskets and there's only one vendor in Illinois that has the expertise in order to work on them and it's lame. And for that reason, we waived bids for that. Now, I'm asking for the exact same thing, just on a different well because this well also had, contains those mercury seals. It has the same column pipe, same motor, same pump and the same electrical cable. So that's kind of the first part of this project. The second part is site improvements. And this is different from well six. This is unique to well five. What this includes is work to the well itself where we're going to be demolishing the wellhouse building. We're going to be restoring the site. We're going to be taking the discharge pipe and moving it from above ground underground. We're going to be adding some more valves to isolate this well from a different well. And we're also adding a pitless adapter and that's the component that I'm asking to waive bids on. And what the pitless adapter is, is basically a device that gets welded underground so that the pipe can now come out of the pitless adapter underground and continue on its way. Right now, that pipe goes above ground and back down underground. And the risk at that point is when it enters the wellhouse, if that wellhouse foundation shifts at all, it can create stress on that above ground, above ground pipe and crack. And it also gets exposed to the elements. But not only that, there's a valve in it that's been failing from time to time and water's been leaking back into the well from the treatment side of things. So when, when we look at when, the reason we're asking to waive the bids on the pitless adapter is because this is a piece of equipment that takes twelve to fourteen weeks to order. So if we were to start the site improvements project, so the sequence of the project would go the pump and motor rehabilitation, then the site improvements. The reason we want to do this component of the site improvements is because it takes twelve to fourteen weeks to order it. And to remain on schedule, if we were to order that with the site improvements project, that already pushes it out that much further. The company that installs the pitless adapter just so happens to be lame and it'd be more cost effective if they were to do it with this project because otherwise there would be two mobilizations. They'd have to come now to do the pump and motor rehabilitation, but then they'd have to come back a second time to install this pitless adapter and then they'd be delaying that project another twelve to fourteen weeks. So the reason the villages or the reason Public Works is requesting the waiver of bid is in this instance is because we believe it'd be more cost effective and because it would get the project back, it would keep the project on its intended schedule. So the cost of all of that is estimated to be two hundred and forty thousand dollars. In the budget, we currently have three hundred thousand dollars and it would be coming from the water fund. So the request at this time is to approve the waiver of bids to perform the pump well rehabilitation and maintenance well and the part of the well site improvements and award the contract to Lane Christiansen Company in the estimated amount of two hundred and forty thousand dollars, but not to exceed the budget amount of three hundred thousand.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
So yeah, Lane, they've done most of our work.
They've done.
And they're familiar with our whole system.
That's correct. They've had a lot of experience. They've, there's only been one other company who's done any other work on our well besides them.
Plus they're local.
Plus they, yeah, they're out of Aurora.
Yeah, they're good. I think it's great.
I think they installed the pitless adapters that are two newest wells too. They did it. Well, they, yes, definitely at eight and nine they did. And they drilled the well at nine or at eight, sorry.
Okay, quick call the role, please.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Nedjvedj?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
All right, item five, approval of ordinance authorization, execution of an annexation agreement for the development known as Forest Ridge Townhome Development. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. The next four items on the agenda tonight are associated with the Forest Ridge Townhome Development. This is the Nine Acres of land on Oak Street, just west of the Windstone Place subdivision. We've been discussing this, I think, since April two thousand nineteen with the public hearing back in two thousand twenty. Subsequent board meetings to discuss the development plans, also the annexation agreement. The annexation agreement was brought in its draft form on May seventeenth for conversation. It was well received. So the public hearing tonight was actually associated with item number five, which is the annexation agreement for the development known as Forest Ridge Townhomes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Quick call the role, please.
Trustee Nedjvedj?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
All right, thanks. Item six, approval of ordinance annexing annexing certain territories that builds North River, Illinois to be known as Forest Ridge Townhome Development. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the ordinance annexing the Nine Acres.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Recall the role, please.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Nedjvedj?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Item seven, approval of ordinance zoning nine point oh five acres of property situated at thirty-eight West Two Twenty-Nine Oak Street, North Illinois to the R three general residence zoning district. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the ordinance establishing the R three general residence district on the property.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Recall the role, please.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Nedjvedj?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Item eight, approval of ordinance granting a special use for R three general residence zoning district plan development on the property located at thirty-eight West Two Twenty-Nine Oak Street, North Illinois to be known as a Forest Ridge Townhome Development. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is going to establish the PUD on the property. Again, there's five townhome buildings, one duplex for a total of thirty-one residential units.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Recall the role, please.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Nedjvedj?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
All right, thanks. Item nine, approval of a special event permit for My Place Hotel. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number nine is for a special event at My Place. They have a, a new setup in their bar area that is run by Tap Bill and they are officially would like to have a grand opening to invite people to come take a look and see what it's about. That is six to eleven PM on Saturday, July seventeenth. The reason needed a special event permit is because there would be, they would transfer a cart of alcohol outside next to their hotel area by their parking lot and they would actually have sound an hour past our requirement, which is anything past ten PM on a Saturday, they have to get permission from the board.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Quick call the role, please.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Nedjvedj?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item ten, approval of a special event permit for wedding reception on the Village Home property. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I think you're, you'll see that with COVID, we've definitely had people inquiring more and more about having weddings and backyard parties and whatnot in their, in their, at their residences. And in this case, three oh one long is kind of a special property because off of Long Avenue, we actually have two pieces of, I guess you would consider them right of way, not easements. If you look at the map of our property on our right of way, which is the street and up to about the sidewalk area, there's actually two sections of road that go north, south as if they were going to connect one day to the adjacent subdivision, but apparently when the subdivision off of Ridge Road was built, they never stopped, those roads never completed, they just stopped. So those two little pieces of right of way now off of Long are in between houses and they're just grassed areas. They're, they don't have pavement or grass. The residents have been maintaining them. This resident is hosting a wedding on September tenth from two to eight PM. They would like to
a wedding on September tenth from two to eight PM. Uh, they would like to, because that part of that yard, if you will, that's next to their yard is actually Village Right-of-Way, they technically need a permit from us because it's our property. So, that's what this is about. They would like, in case their guests spill over into that property for the wedding.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Steve, is there any, like, liability issue with that?
They submitted a certificate of insurance. They have to anytime liquor is involved. So, they've actually provided that to the village.
Okay, thank you. Quick, call the roll, please.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Nedved?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
All right. Item eleven, approval of a special event permit for the North River District Alliance, summer concerts slash movies in the park. Steve?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, as in the past, Norda is looking to have events down in the park, uh, whether they be concerts or, uh, movie in the parks. And right now, um, because it's using, once again, village's property, uh, they go through a, a permit request to the village board. They're looking to host events on June twenty-four, July twenty-second, and August twelfth.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
I just want to say that I'm happy to see this back. I've had several residents that, that live near me that were asking about the music in the park. Um, so, I'm just glad to see it back.
Okay, quick, call the roll, please.
Trustee Nedved?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item twelve, approval of resolution designating the North River District Alliance rhythm of the riverfront, summer concert, movie series, a village-sponsored event, allowing the consumption of liquor in the North Riverfront Park. Steve?
Uh, thank you. Item number twelve, I'm not going to repeat it. It's three sentences, is basically every time that Norda has an event down there at the riverfront in the summertime, uh, they would like to have BYUOB, which is what we do for, let's say, digital light or fireworks. Um, our code requires that we sponsor it as a village-sponsored event in order for an organization to, uh, have liquor in the park. We, um, partner with Norda Projects. Every year, we bring this resolution forward before they can have residents bring liquor to the park.
Motion to approve?
Second. Discussion? Quick, call the roll, please.
Trustee Gately?
Yes.
Trustee Lowery?
Yes.
Trustee Nedved?
Yes.
Trustee Salazar?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yeah.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Um, Village President Ford, I just had one comment. I wanted to compliment the police department on their, their actions at Woodman's that night, uh, happened to be driving by and actually pulling in about maybe ten minutes afterwards and, uh, fast action and, and, um, just, you know, effort along with the Aurora Police. But, uh, you know, our, our team did a good job and, uh, fast, um, culmination to the whole thing. So, um, we passed that along. That was really great. So, it's sad that it happened, but, um, your team did a great job.
Keep up the good work.
Yeah. Uh, trustee comments? Ministry is report.
Uh, so I want to give an update on the HVAC system for the third straight meeting. So, it was working for the third straight time at about six o'clock it shut off. And, uh, Brian Richter, our, uh, Public Works Superintendent, John had been, uh, working to figure out how to get it back on. And it, it did come back on at one point and I feel like there's air still coming out. Um, but we did contact our HVAC person and they checked our system. And without going into this elaborate discussion, we basically have two separate systems for two halves of the building. And this system that we're in right now, um, apparently physically is fine, but we have a computer system that controls it. And we don't know why the computers are shutting it off and not restarting it. So, we are kind, we've already contacted the computer company that controls the boiler system. And we're trying to arrange a meeting between them and the HVAC people to figure out why it randomly shuts off and why it, it literally takes John or myself, uh, over the phone. John had to teach me how to do this, but you have to throw a switch outside and then do a bunch of stuff on the computer. So, we're trying to figure out why that's not working. Um, other than that, on a different note, and it seems to only happen on Monday night. So, um, on another note, garbage, uh, the transition is, is at its peak right now. And, um, ironically, the transition to group has not been awful at all, which we were gearing up for a ton of phone calls about missed pickups and, and people not getting their toters. And we have had some, but the overwhelming majority of people that have called Village Hall in the last couple of weeks or have been on our Facebook page appear to be upset that Waste Management never picked up their toters. And so, uh, we've been working with them nonstop to try to get it resolved. Uh, they use a third-party company to pick the toters up on the last pickup day. That company not only missed an entire neighborhood, um, but we actually found that they missed more than one neighborhood. They thought they only missed one. And then we're like, no, there's streets on this side that were missed as well. Plus, there were a lot of people put garbage out. So, when the company came by, they couldn't take their toter because they hadn't been dumped properly yet. So, they sent another crew back out with a trailer on Friday. They got most of those, those two neighborhoods that we knew were missed. They got those neighborhoods. There's still a couple of one-offs. We see them around town. I've seen a five or six in my neighborhood. Um, so we are still working to complete a list and then continuously, uh, I'll work with Waste Management to get out there and get them. That's it.
All right, thank you. I have a question. Steve, is the village putting out any information about, uh, the state moving to phase five for the residents, other than what's listed on our website?
No, as of right now, we just have our COVID update page and we would just update that with the, the phase fi, or the phase five implementation.
And I, I guess my second question would be with regard to the eviction moratorium, that, do we have access to any sort of county or state grants that might benefit residents that might be affected, uh, once the moratorium, can we publicize anything on the website or links to grant? I know there's grants available.
We, uh, posted something recently about a rental assistance program that the county was administering with COVID funds. I have not heard, uh, and Mike, jump in if you've heard anything, but I have not heard anything on about, uh, foreclosure, uh, money for houses going through foreclosure.
This would be the rental assistance.
It's the same program?
Yeah. Well, no, I, it's not the foreclosure. It's the eviction moratorium. So, it would be covered under the rental assistance.
Yeah, okay. And then I'll verify, I'll go back. I think we posted about two weeks ago, but I'd be more than happy to have it reposted.
I think it would be helpful in case there's any residents that are affected.
Sure.
There's also landlord assistance now, the state passed recently.
Okay.
So, if you're a landlord and you're, you know, you're in rears or you're, you're not getting your rent, it's owed to you that there's also assistance program for that as well.
Okay, thank you. Village Department reports.
I got something to say. Make it quick. Um, the, the United TIP District is moving forward nicely. Uh, we had a positive recommendation from the joint review board on May twenty-first. Uh, last week, on June third, we had an informational meeting, uh, where everyone in the TIP was invited